Want me to order?
Mr. Brulee?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk? Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If these, my fellow board members, we're going to add something to this agenda. Under item five, we're going to add another item six, which is going to be additional citizen comments. So we're going to have an item four, item five, a public hearing, and item six for citizen comments where they can, if they have comments on the proposals on the floor. If there's no questions about it, all signs of yay would be good enough. Good? Good, thank you. So now we're going to go into this portion of the meeting for citizen comments. Please address your comments to the chair of the board. Give your comments about three minutes. Citizen comments.
Hi, Jill Yor. Do I have to give my address? 219-40 Wendell, I'm used to it. I am here today representing Henry Ford McComb Hospital, which is where I'm employed as a registered nurse, and I ask to come tonight and let the board know about an opportunity that we're going to be bringing to your families. So just a quick backstory about diabetes. I'm sure all of you know that diabetes is on the rise. It is quite an epidemic in our community. I'm talking about type two diabetes, the type of diabetes that you acquire, we used to call it adult onset diabetes because it happens later in life as your cells become resistant to insulin. So many, many, many adults are developing type two diabetes, and now we're seeing many youth developing type two diabetes. So it is, it is an epidemic. There are many programs that are available for adults to prevent diabetes, and I will pass one of these out to each of you if you know somebody that might be interested in it. We have, there is great research that shows that we can prolong the diagnosis for diabetes if you're at risk and even prevent you from being diagnosed with diabetes by changing your lifestyle. So the CDC has approved diabetes prevention programs for adults that will prolong the time before they're diagnosed or prevent them from being diagnosed. For every year that you go without being diagnosed, if you're at risk or have prediabetes, you're saving thousands of dollars. One in every four healthcare dollars are spent on the treatment of diabetes. So it's a concern we all have, so especially for our youth. We're just seeing more and more kids diagnosed with diabetes. So Henry Ford McComb partnered with GDEC, Greater Detroit Area Health Council, and wrote for funding to the Michigan Health Endowment Fund to create a diabetes prevention program for youth. So there isn't an acceptable one yet by the CDC, but they want people to develop curriculum and implement programs and, and show outcomes. So we were funded to do that. So over the summer, we'll be working on the curriculum, and come fall, we're going to be offering a class here for the youth for, for diabetes prevention, but it's, it's actually a lifestyle intervention program. So it'll focus on self-esteem, behavior cues, physical activity, and nutrition education. They'll, they'll be working with a lifestyle coach, and it's a year-long program. So we'll be doing two, two groups, one in the middle school and one in the high school. And so I just wanted to give you a chance to hear about it from me before you read about it in the news. It's big, it's, it's big. Since we've been funded, we've already been approached by other funders who want to, who want to get in on this, and so we're looking forward to it.
Great. Fantastic. That's your answer.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jill.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
And Jill has been very active with our youth with medical issues and whether it's mental or physical. So she brought the health clinic here to us a few years ago, and it's been a huge success. And just to show how successful it has been when they were having a couple of issues with the funding getting and person in, the kids, you know, were very upset that the clinic had to shut down for a few, a couple of months, I believe it was. So we were very pleased and fortunate to have Jill work not only be a community member, but also work very closely with our students and their health issues. So thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Are there any other additional citizen comments? Are there any additional citizen comments? Seeing there being none, we'll go on to item number five, public hearing on proposed budget for 2018, 2019, and 2018 tax rate. We will discuss item A, discuss, we'll break them down as you go over them, but we're going to go with item A, B, and C. Start off with A first, discuss the official year 2018, 2019 budget.
Okay, thank you. I guess tonight we will be bringing a proposal to the board to approve the budget for, the revised budget for 2018 and then also approve one for the 2019 school year. And when, we do get a portion of our funding from local taxes, which is the 18 mills that are levied on non-home step properties. And anytime you are going to be levying taxes on the community, you do have to bring, have a public hearing to give the community opportunity to voice their opinions or anything concerning that. This is not a new mill we levy this every year because part of our state aid is based on the amount of local revenue that we can generate. And the state assumes that you will collect those 18 mills, and so they deduct that amount that we can collect locally from the total state aid that we're due, and then they send us the balance. So with that, for next year, we are expecting to levy the 18 mills so that we can do our general operating budget and with the, that we generally let, generate about three, just under $4 million locally. And the balance comes from the state and from federal sources. So we're looking at a total budget for next year in revenues at $12,937,850. And for expenditures, we're estimating that to be $12,228,550. So we are, we do have to publish the fact that we will be going over the budget and the millage in the paper, and we did so. That was in Sunday's paper. And we, we have to complete our L4029 report that we send to the county clerk in order to levy those mills. And that also includes the debt millage that we would be levying, and that will be right at 11.8 mills, which is the same as what we had this past year. So nothing changes for the debt millage, and there will be no increase also for the 18 mills that we would normally levy. So with that, well, we will be asking the board to approve the budget and the debt millage for the coming year. Any questions concerning the budget piece? We will be talking about that in more detail when we get to the regular hearing. So again, we're looking to generate 12.9 million in revenues and 12.2 in expenditures.
So you discussed item five, you discussed official year 2018, 2019 budget. You also briefly tapped on just now, I believe, the discussion of the official year 2018, 2019 tax levy on non-home step properties, which is the 18 mills.
Yes.
We also just briefly touched on discussion of the official year 2018, 2019 debt tax levy on all properties.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. This portion of the meeting, we're going to go to item six, which is addition to citizen comments. Are there any additional citizen comments? Are there any citizen comments? Are there any board comments?
Yes, Mr. Brulee.
The budget represents a continuation of the budget that we've had the last couple of years, which is a very tight budget, but which allows us to continually decrease our operating deficit. Over the last couple of years, we've been successful in reducing that. Hopefully, we'll come to a point where this will end in about a year or so, if all things being equal. I mean, we're hopeful that the end of this year's budget, when we get the official from the accountant, at the end will show another decrease ability, not so much as we had in the past, but at least on that projected path. The millage doesn't represent any increase whatsoever in asking citizens for money, and in fact, the debt millage, we took this year in the beginning of the year advantages of bundling and reducing the amount and buying debt in a way that we were able to reduce what people were going to have to pay long-term. So we took advantage of that and followed this year. So I think all in all, keeping the budget the way it is for the next coming year and these other two things will keep us in good stead.
Thank you, Mr. Brulee.
Any additional board comments?
I apologize for being late. So the budget, as we see as it now, if I'm looking at this number correctly, as of the 19th, we'll have a surplus of $36,727?
Yes.
And that's, barring on everything that we, I know we had talked about in our workshop, we had talked about the POs that's out there and all that. I mean, we never got a real figure on what the open POs are. Do we have a, do we have a better knowledge of what those are right now?
All of that will be finalized during audit. So that's why my budget is very conservative to make sure that everything is covered. And once we finalize the audit, then we'll have a clearer picture of exactly where we are. But we've always done conservative budgets to make sure that barring anything that got misplaced or whatever, even with the vendors, that they are late sending in invoices and things, we make sure that we're conservative to cover any outlier.
Okay, yes, I know I had mentioned, personally, I had mentioned because of the harsh winter we had.
Yes.
And we've had two minor winters, two previous years. I know we're going to take some type of hit.
Right.
As far as those deals coming in from our vendor.
Yes.
For winter services.
So, but yes, that's why we always budget a conservative expenditure.
Okay. Okay. Seeing there's no additional comments, we'll move this portion of the agenda of the public hearing for adjournment. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
The public hearing is adjourned. We will move to open the regular meeting. Call the meeting in order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brulee?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
This portion of the meeting moved down to item three, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now approaching the regular meeting where we have the citizen comments. This portion of the meeting where you address the president or the chair of the board. Please keep your comments for three minutes. Please state your name and address. Are there any citizen comments? You may repeat yourself if you like.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize I did. I didn't know.
That's, that's okay. If you want to do round two, it's okay. Okay.
Who was that?
Oh. Hey, how you doing? Are there any citizen comments?
Yes, Perko. Yes, Ms. Brulee. Well, not a citizen yet, but when can we talk about additional things for the agenda?
Add some items?
Yeah, yeah.
As soon as we don't citizen comments, we can add some items.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing there being none, citizen comments are now closed. We're going to move over to, before we go to action items, Mr. Brulee, does something you want to add?
Yeah, I want to add the discussion of a workshop wherever it would fit in to bring up that topic. Setting a date, hammer.
Mr. Brulee, how about we put that down to item number 19 after item 18? Where it's a contradiction.
Wherever's fine.
Okay. So Mr. Brulee moved to add additional item number 19, changing superintendent's comments to number item eight, 20. Number item 19 will be discussion of a future board workshop. Is that correct, Mr. Brulee? Future board workshop. He moved. Is there any a second? Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Is any discussions, questions? Seeing there be none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. McFadden, sorry about that.
Yes. Motion passed. Item 19 is discussion of future board workshop. Moving on with the agenda, action items. Item five, approval of minutes. Moved by Mr. Voorhees. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Escalante. Any question or discussions? Seeing there be none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six, bills for payment. So move. Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Any question or discussion? Yes, ma'am.
There should have been two minutes for approval. One was for the workshop and one was for the regular meeting last month.
Okay, I only have one approval of minutes. Actually, item number five said approval of minutes. So approval of minutes, so I guess that could be both of them?
Yes.
Something good?
Yeah.
All right. Unless the board want to approve two separate minutes, set of minutes, one for the workshop and one for the regular meeting.
You could if you, the motion reflects that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So item five, approval of minutes reflects approval of both sets of minutes from the workshop and the regular board meeting. Back down to item six, I had a move by Dr. McFadden and a second by Ms. Walker. Any questions or discussion about the motion on the floor for bills for payment? Seeing there being none, please call the roll.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item seven, action item proposed, official year 2017, 2018, final budget amendment. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
So move by Mr. Brulee.
Yes, sir.
Second by Mr. Voorhees. Is there questions or discussion about this item number seven? You want to speak again about discussions? Please speak.
Okay. Okay, again, we're looking at the 2018-19 amendment, final amendment for the year. We've made adjustments to the revenue and the expenditure portion. We're looking at a total of $13,692,850 for revenue and expenditures, $13,750, $13,000, $762,550 in expenditures. Will give us an excess of revenue of $35,500. So we'll be reducing our deficit from the $705,000 last year, and it will be reflected at $672,573 at the end of this 2018, 17, 18 school year. And final expenditures will be coming in as we're completing our audit, and that will be getting underway preliminary will be tomorrow, first day that they will be in for just what preliminary to see what we have going on. And throughout the summer, we will be collecting any final expenditures that are out there. And so we're hoping that we will be, have a better improvement of net operating results at that time. But for now, we will ask the board to approve the budget as it stands right now.
Any additional questions? Any additional discussion?
And actually, we do have the three budgets. The biggest one that the board approves is the general operating, but we also have final budget approval for special revenues, which is our food service fund, and there were some minor adjustments to that one. Total revenues would be 1.2 million and expenditures at, let's see, expenditures at $970,000. So we're requesting that one be approved as well as our debt budget, debt services. We're looking at total proceeds revenue at 600, I'm sorry, $6,296,401, and expenditures would be $6,664,686. So again, we're requesting that the board approves all three of those budgets.
Seeing there's no additional questions, Mr.?
I guess, I'm having a brain fart right now, so please indulge me. I'm going to the page where we get yellow and purple. This is page 35.
Correct.
Kind of walk me through that.
Okay.
I see, yellow means what? One is approved, one is proposed.
Yes, we, you approved a budget in December.
In December, okay.
December 22nd, 2017. So that was our official budget, the last budget that was approved.
Okay.
And I'm requesting that we amend that budget for final at year end.
Okay.
Which is, and that's why it's dated June 19. So it's showing you what you approved last December.
December, okay.
And the purple is the new budget.
The new budget.
Yes.
All right. And where it says, where it says ending fund balance, $705,336, then the purple has $672,573.
Yes.
Is that good or bad?
That's good. It shows that we're reducing our.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm having a brain fart.
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's okay. That's why we're here. It's just showing that we're reducing our deficit.
Maybe you're having a bodily function.
Yeah, something, yeah. Something, Ed, you know what I'm saying? Something.
That'll make the discussion a bit.
Yeah, that's, you know, see, I'm working midnight, so I, my equilibrium's all thrown off right now, so.
Okay, all right, okay. All right. Okay, I'm good. You good?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Any additional discussions about the budget?
Well, just to say, this is complicated, and we spent time at it at the committee meeting, and what it shows is that we are closer to our goal of reducing the deficit than we were before. So that doesn't mean that we still don't have a little bit to go in terms of what you talked about earlier. And that is getting in these extra bills that we know are coming, that we have budgeted for, but we're hopeful that when we have the audited version of this, will probably be a couple hundred thousand to the good, which can go towards our deficit.
Good.
Now, it wasn't as many, it isn't as many dollars this year as it was last year because we had the reduction of the number of students in September. And in September, we didn't take quick action to reduce the budget. We sort of held still, and we went along that path. This year, when we get to the next topic of the budget for 1819, we do in fact have built into that, because these things all interlock.
Right.
Reduction of 50 kids, which means that we're going to have to have a potential layoff list.
Right.
Which there has been discussions with the staff about, which none of us like to see, but it's the only prudent thing to do so that we could in September take action if we don't have the number of students that we have now. So we can only get away with that for about one year, and we had enough built in to do it, but this coming up year, things are going to be tighter, but over the last two or three years, the budgets have proven to work.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, each year, we have not gone further in debt. We have in fact eliminated that over the last three years or so. So, you know, we're, we have a proven feature here to act on. So I, you know, it is, it is complicated, and part of what I've learned is that we have to have it in certain formats, not for your easy reading, but for the state of Michigan's requirement.
Right, right. Which I understand that, yeah. Okay, because I know what, like you said, I know what we need to do going forward, and I'm just kind of complex about that, how we, but I'll have those questions later on. So I'm good right now.
There you go. Thank you.
Couldn't say it better myself.
All right. That has been discussed. Any additional? Mr. Brulee, any more insight? Anybody else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brulee?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes. Motion passed. Item nine, approve state aid note, recommended action.
Oh, what about eight?
Did I miss one? Hold on, I'm sorry, my apologies. Please excuse me, I lost my glasses two weeks ago. All right.
We're trying to tell your heart, not your head, so.
Yes.
Item eight.
So hopefully, no client has seen you in the last.
I'm all touchy-filly, so.
Moving on.
Moving on. Item eight. Proposed, proposed official year 2018, 2019 budget. That's the one we just did, item eight. So we're on item nine, do we got something different?
No. The first one was for the current year.
Yeah, first one was for 1718. Now we on.
We're on 1819.
1819.
That is a glasses mistake right there. All right, official year 2018, 2019 budget.
Okay.
Is there a motion? I support. Questions or discussion? Superintendent, do you want to explain this one, or?
Yes. And we did briefly talk about it during the public hearing. So with the board approving the final for 2018, now we're moving those numbers forward for 2019. So if you look at the top portion where it says beginning fund balance, the $672,553 that we plan to end the current year end is moved forward to the new year at the top for revenue. So because we did have a loss of 50. So because we did have a loss of fifty students this past, during this year, we are also budgeting, the assumption is that we will have, lose another fifty. And because of our population decreasing, it also plays an effect on our grants, on the federal dollars we receive, because it's based on the, our enrollment. So taking into consideration reduction of the fifty students and a reduction of our grants, our federal dollars, that's a total of losses in revenue of seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars that we're looking at. And so that would give us twelve million, nine hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for operating next year. And then looking at the expenditures, because we are losing, we're budgeting those two losses, also have to take into consideration that we had, when we had gone to the state, to treasury, and discussed our E-debt, which is an enhanced deficit elimination plan, that was to get us out of debt, back into the black in the twenty-nineteen school year. So taking that into consideration, we also wanted to reduce our deficit to zero, which is that six hundred seventy-two thousand. That gives us right at a reduction of one point five million dollars that we would reduce. So that is what our expenditures reflect compared to last year. So total expenditures would be twelve million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, which net operating results would give us seven hundred nine thousand, three hundred dollars to the good. And zeroing out our deficit, that shows that we'll be in the black at thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And we did have some discussions with, we went around to all of the buildings, I did, and during the staff meetings, and we, I started discussing this with our staff. I believe it was that the first one that we went into detail was in May. I went to all of the buildings to discuss what our situation was. And we truly do hope that, you know, we do not lose our fifty students. But everything is based on the number of pupils that we have in the district. So after discussion and answering some of the questions that the staff had, we went back and, and I was able to work on this budget and show that we would be out of deficit at the end of next year. So we have a lot of work to do this summer. And we're going to be adding some different things that hopefully that our students and families will find very beneficial for their educational year. So with that, that is the general fund budget that I'm asking for approval. The other one that would be our special revenues, and again, that's our food service budget. And it, it is the same with carrying forth the budget for this year, for the twenty-eighteen school year into the twenty-nineteen school year. As we've been, Chart Wells and the staff under the Charlotte Oates have been running a pretty tight ship as far as expenditures go and keeping all of our costs down. So we're moving this current year budget to the new year. And so that's food service under special revenues. And then the debt service budget, that is where we pay off our bond issues. And as Mr. Brewley pointed out earlier, we did refinance our debt last spring because we were under, we had some decent interest rates on that. But we were able to take advantage of even lower interest rates on the money that we were borrowing. So we went through, had everything refinanced. And with that, we would, we reduced our debt on, to our other bond issues. But now we would be borrowing more from the state school bond loan fund. And their interest rate is much lower than the one that we, not a whole lot, but it was enough to, that we were able to reduce our costs by right around two million dollars over the long term. So the board approved that, and it was a significant amount. So we would be borrowing approximately eight point eight million dollars from the school bond loan fund, which would give us thirteen million, nine hundred seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars in revenues. And then our total expenditures would be right at, and refinancing and paying the notes that are due on our refinanced bonds. It gives us a total of thirteen million, nine hundred seventy-four thousand, twenty dollars, which would be taking a draw on our fund equity at sixty-six thousand dollars. And at the end of June, twenty-nineteen, that would leave a fund equity projection at two hundred fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. So with these three budgets, we're requesting the board approve them for the twenty-eighteen-nineteen school year. Any questions concerning any of three of those budgets? Yes?
We were to the positive, how much last year?
We reduced it by one, right at one point, a little better than one point four million dollars.
One point four million dollars. And now we have to turn around and we have to reduce this budget. We have to pull out one point five million dollars on this budget to, to...
Yes.
You're trying to come wrong.
Yes.
To hit the numbers that you're, that you just discussed.
Yes.
So that's a three million dollar turnaround. Roughly, two point nine million dollar turnaround. From, to the positive one point four, now we got to take out one point five.
Uh, no, we would be taking out seven hundred and nine thousand. But if you mean expenditures, yes, we'd be reducing.
Well, you said one point five. We need to, we need to remove one point five million dollars out of the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget.
Yes.
To make our numbers.
Yes.
And that's based on us losing fifty kids.
Yes.
Okay.
And seven hundred, what, three hundred and fifty dollars in, in grant funding.
Right, right. So we're taking a hit all across the board.
Oh, yes.
I like to talk about the elephant in the room. Elephant in the room is big, but nobody likes to talk about it. To me, we have to reduce, and, you know, I'm pretty sure that business committee has discussed this. I haven't seen any detailed information on it, but that's either here or there. To me, what does, what do we look like from a personnel, from curriculum, from facility, from services? We've, if we got to remove one point five million dollars, what does that look like? And just to, you know, we've been losing kids. It ain't like, anyway, it's, you know, we all lose kids. I think, but everybody is, you know, that's across state of Michigan. We all losing kids for whatever reasons. I'm just concerned, just going forward, one point five million, how many teachers is that though? I mean, typically, what kind of teach, what's the, you know, I don't need names, but what's the, what's the body count as far as teachers that we got to lay off?
We are looking at fifteen and central office.
Fifteen, fifteen out of the classroom and then some central office?
It's not necessarily the classroom. It's not necessarily...
There's fifteen?
Because, yes, fifteen people.
Okay.
So a total of sixteen people.
Total sixteen, okay.
So it's across. And we will be in further discussion with administrators this summer, looking at how that would look, what impact it may have on our classroom sizes.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I said, what's curriculum? What does, I mean, that's going to affect curriculum, what does that look like?
So we will be discussing that at a later date to see exactly how that would look.
But we don't know how it look right now.
No.
But we need to prove this now.
Yes. And we've done this, I think the last time we did this was what, maybe three summers ago?
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. My apologies.
Oh, you're okay. We did this about three summers ago, and we were faced with the same thing. And we did, and we have had discussion with staff, the reality of this, because again, just like in any, any district, the number of students determine.
Oh, yeah, oh, I totally get that. Yeah, I mean, I'm with you on that. I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm with you, you know. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this number and what we're going to look like as a district going forward.
And what we, and what ended up happening during that summer, we did get a lot of our teaching staff to volunteer to do phone banks. And that was, we believe it was very successful. They came in and they contacted all of our parents, all of our community parents that are in the district, and had discussions with them. And we believe it was very successful because that was the first year we had such a low reduction in students. It was between five and ten students that left. And normally, over the years, I think you guys are very familiar, you had three hundred students walk out. And at the beginning of the year, you had a hundred and fifty. So we believe that, you know, that what the efforts that they put in with central office staff making those one-on-one phone calls and talking to parents made a huge impact. So of course, we're going to ask again this year if, you know, we can get volunteers to come in and help us to do that.
So, um, excuse me, Mr. Monk. Madam Superintendent, basically what Mr. Monk is asking is, what we going to look like after this one point five million dollar cut? Not basically the steps or actions that's going to be taken to prevent it or make things happen. Basically, in capital, how we going to look? And if I'm trying to decipher this, what you saying is, we need to prove the budget first, and then you'll put the steps in process to make you fit the budget.
Right, where, where the staff is already talking about how that would look.
Right, but you got to have the budget approved first.
Yes.
Before you know what you're working with.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
I don't know if that answered your question at all, Mr. Monk?
Sort of, sort of, kind of. I just, I mean, I'm just trying to wrap my head on how do, how do we go from one point five to the, to the positive to one point, one point four to the positive one year, then the next year we go to one point five negative that we got to take out? That's what I'm trying to...
We, we, no, that, we reduced every year, Mr. Monk.
Okay.
Every year we've reduced. So this... Yeah, we, we've been reducing since, I know since I've been here the longest.
Guess I need to just sit in on the finance committee sometime just to get, you know, I haven't been on there since the first year I was taken off, so... And then I just don't, I mean, I don't hear communication out of there. And the only time, and I've said this before, the only time I hear about things is when we get here at the table. And I don't like to, you know, this would led into lone, drawn out board meetings last time. You get to ask all these questions, and I'm going to shut up in a minute. But it's kind of like, you know, we need to have, you know, I'm going to suggest we go to two meetings a month, whereas that we need to have a meeting of the whole. We had discussed that, it got shut down, but it's needed because we all need to know. Instead of three people knowing this about this committee, three people knowing that about that committee, and then you come to the table and you have questions, and you know, it's kind of like, you know, I just, I, you know...
I'm not going to cut you off. That's why we got to item number nineteen, if I'm correct, Mr. Brewley?
Well...
And I know this doesn't...
It doesn't, it doesn't relate to that. I mean, I'm in favor of what Jason's proposing. I, I think the way to look at this, though, in a, in a global sense and for the audience as much, is that you approve a budget now for the worst. So that when September comes, we can't, we can't really say what the school's going to look like in September because we don't know who will be here. If all, you know, if these fifty students don't leave, then the school will look pretty much as it is, unless all of a sudden, there's a bump of kids in, say, the middle school, and there's less kids in the grade school. So you really can't figure out, no one could at this point, of what the school will look like in the fall because we don't have the commitment as to where the students are coming at what grade level. So that's one of the reasons that you can't, you have to adopt a budget in June by law, and we don't know what's going to happen in September. So we're preparing to be able to be more flexible so that whatever happens in September, we can manage it. Now, I also hear you asking, which I understand, and I think it's a very good question. Are we doing all the things for the students that we should? What does a school look like in that respect? That, I think, is a, is a different discussion away from the budget.
Right.
Which, yeah, I want to have a workshop on. And I think also that we need to have two meetings a month of some kind, be it one workshop and one formal meeting where we could cajole. I think more people on the board should be involved in the finance or curriculum committee or others, but I think those two in particular. But the way it's structured now, you only have three people because you've had four.
Right.
Then it would be a different legal entity.
Right.
But we should figure it out. And if I were not on those two committees, I would be wondering myself. And so I'm sympathetic to what you're saying. I think we as a board have to grapple that, and it needs to be a motion next meeting to restructure it. Maybe that can be one of the specific things at the workshop. I have two other specific things when that comes up at number nineteen or whatever it is to talk about, to do. So I don't disagree with you. But I think at this point, it is, it's not a question of what we want the school to look like. It's a question of what will the school look like? And then we figure out how best to make things happen.
Right.
So the budget is one thing. The other questions, I think, are a separate item. They obviously work together.
I do want to just state that the processes that we are going through with the budget and the finance committee is no different than what it was when you were on the committee. We're following the same protocol, so nothing as far as that goal has changed. So we are still in line with what, you know, when you were the finance, on the finance committee. We're doing the same thing. But I do understand what you're saying, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarity, Mr. Brewley. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Monk, any additional questions?
No.
While there is a motion on the floor, is there any other questions or discussions about this motion?
Well, I just, if I could say again, I want to reiterate that, especially for the staff, we are not looking to have any layoff occur. Our job over the summer will be try to encourage as many people to come back to the school as possible. But we have to be flexible so that we could move in September if we need to. That will be the absolute last resort. But we are at a point where we might be able to see a balanced budget with our operating deficit gone, which will give us then the flexibility to build back those things that we're missing. I would also put out there that there may be a new governor in November. And if you had a new governor, that may change what their feeling is on the pure pupil amount we get, for the good or for the bad. Could it happen either way? Now, this year, there is going to be an increase. So that's a good thing. So that may help buffer us a bit, that if we are beneficiaries, which we should be a little bit. So knowing that figure, I don't know if you use that figure in this budget because it's a brand-new one.
Right.
Is that in here?
And not total, it's right around eight thousand dollars, eighty thousand dollars.
So that could help us too in the next couple of months.
Yeah.
So we'll use all avenues.
And from my understanding, so we didn't take proactive measures last year, which that's why we, we need to make sure we take proactive measures this year.
Right. But what we had done is we had built into the budget enough so that we were able to absorb it
Right.
without going into further debt and still eliminate some debt. So I think we've been, over the last two or three years, pretty diligent in, in the way we've, we've done this.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Once again, Mr. Brewley, thank you very much. Well, well said. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to item number nine.
Okay.
Approved state aid note and recommended action is the approved annual state aid note borrowing.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent.
All right, we have a.
Wait a minute, action item. Let's go with, let's, let's get a motion first. Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, now, there's a motion on the floor and it's supported by Ms. Ms. Walker. Is there any question or discussions? Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Okay, each year, we do, because of timing, we don't, sometimes we have a cash flow shortfall. And when that happens, we do borrow money from the state aid fund. And I'm working right now with legal to get those documents together so that we do have the ability to borrow in, in the event we need to. So, I'm asking the board, last year, we borrowed right at 1.2 million dollars. And this year, we're looking at, it was possibly right at less than a million that we may have to borrow from the state aid fund. And again, it is a timing issue, and it is borrowed against our state aid funding. So, our people funding that we get from the state, so that's how we pay, pay it back. Because again, it's a timing issue. So, I'm asking the board for permission to proceed with that process in the event we do need to borrow.
Okay. Let me ask this question.
Yes.
I'm, you know, I'm a little person, I'm just trying to think little things. So, this is more like a payday loan?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
But at a better rate of interest.
He has no loan shark in on this one.
Okay, that's, that's, I understand it completely. Nice, and he took a payday loan out before.
You have something, the best one liners, I'm trying to tell you. Payday loan, that's a good one, Doc, I like that.
That's how it works.
Is there any other discussion or questions about this item number? All right, seeing there being none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Dr. McFattan.
Yes.
Motion carry. Item number 10, 18 mils renewal. Is there a motion on the floor?
Probably would, and I support it.
Seeing there's a motion on the floor and it's being supported by Dr. McFattan, is there any questions or discussions about the motion on the floor?
Where are we at? Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, with this one, our, the 18 mils that I spoke of earlier, that's levied on non-homestead properties, which would be the businesses, homestead, people that own their homes here, and that's their domicile. That, this does not affect them. But it's the citizens in the community that approves it. So, those 18 mils are levied on the non-homestead, and the state calculates how much we can raise locally, and then they subtract that from the bill that they would, the revenues that they will send us. So, ours does not expire until December of next year. So, but we are, would like to ask the voters in November to approve the 18 mils. We currently have a little bit better than 18 mils approved, which is 18.1996 mils approved. And the reason we have a little bit over is in the event we are affected by the Hettley, which reduce our 18 mils, we have a cushion to bring our eight, that mil, that levy back up to 18 mils. Because the state looks at it, whether you have it approved or not, they calculate this is what you should have been able to collect locally. And so, they take that off the top regardless of whether you have it approved or not. So, it's good business to have a little cushion there that if you do have to tap into the extra, you'll still be guaranteed your 18 mils. So, that's why we want, this is no increase, this is the exact same thing that we have right now. So, we want to go to the voters and ask, and put this on the November ballot to approve the current mileage limitation so that going forward next year, you know, this will already be approved after that we levy the 18 mils in June of next year.
So, you need the board approval to put it on the ballot?
To put it on the ballot, yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion or questions on the floor, Mr. Monk, please?
Yeah, if people wanna roll a tape from a couple of months ago, they'll think this is deja vu, and it is. We voted a couple of meetings ago to place it on the August ballot. And then we found out that the paperwork wasn't properly handled, in our view, by the law firm, and so it didn't get to the ballot. I, for one, am satisfied that it was a snafu at their level and not at the level of the school district. But that doesn't change the circumstance that we couldn't go in August, which is what we preferred. So, people should not be confused that we're going for this twice. So, this would be a one-time, my understanding it's 10-year.
Yes.
Renewal. This is a base amount, it is not paid by any homeowner who has their primary residence in the district. This is the rental property, business property, non-homestead people. It is not a tax increase, and we would ask for it this November, even though we wanted to do that in August.
That is correct.
Any additional discussion or questions? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Dr. McFattan.
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carry. Item 11, school bond loan program. A motion on the floor. So, move, there's a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. Questions, discussion, item on the floor. Madam Superintendent, give us a word with that.
Okay. Now, this is looking at our debt fund. Again, we had our bond, our, yeah, bonds refinanced last spring and at a lower rate. So, now we go back and ask the school bond loan fund at the state to allow us to borrow the money needed to pay that. And when we do that, again, it's at a lower rate. And the maximum that we will be asking the bond fund for is 9.1 million dollars, and that will be in the, so we don't need that up to that level. We would not borrow that amount, but it would not exceed that amount to pay for our, our bond debt for the 2018, 19 school year. So, what happened, we were collecting right around 5 million locally, and then the balance of it is coming from the state to make our payment. And so, that's why we're asking the board to approve the loan note from the state aid fund.
Ms. Walker, you have a question? I have a question. So, this state bond loan.
Yes.
What's the difference between this and state? The state aid note borrowing is to pay on a state bond loan?
Yes, it's two different.
I know the bond is what we use for building construction.
Right, yes.
Raise the 21st century type of stuff.
Right. The first one, first state aid note we were looking at is borrowing the rate, which is a.
For operations.
Yes, that's what that one is for, which would be less than a million dollars. But this one is to pay the debt that we owe, which, for the buildings.
Building on 21st century stuff.
Yes. So, we do have the bond issues a few years back. That is what this is one to cover.
And this is lowering the interest rate?
Yes, yes. We refinanced in the spring to lower the interest rate. And over the life of the bond, it is reducing the interest rate by about a little over 2 million dollars.
To me, and how much we owe on this bond now?
On this, let me see, we have three of them out there. And, let's see. One total that we owe is 70, 73 million is total on all of them. So, okay, so I'm broken down, let's see, one is at 33 million, and the other two together is 61 million.
Any additional questions or discussions?
That's, that's including payments, too. So, but total we owe out there is the 73. You have 25, 780, 33, 420, and 10 million 430. That's all. Yes, there we go. And in this coming year, we are paying out right around 13 million dollars in interest and, and interest and, and principal payments. Yeah. So, in total, principal, we'll be paying out 11,380, and then in interest is 290, 2,292,520.
Did 292 or 2,292?
2,292,520 dollars in interest.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing there being none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFattan.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
And Mrs. Walker. All right, I said you, I'm sorry.
Motion pass. Item number 12, FSMC contract renewal.
This is a food service.
It's food service contract?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a contract for food service renewal, correct?
Yes.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Probably.
I support. Seeing there's a motion on the floor that's being supported by Dr. McFattan, is there any questions or discussion?
This is, I think, a one-year renewal?
Yes, actually, this is the fourth and final year that we can do our auto renewal. In January, we will be going out, between January and February, we'll be going out, sending our RFPs to food service.
Now, is January the deadline for the RFP or?
No, that's when we send it.
That's the RFP, that's the send out date?
I'll, I'll craft it in January, and then we'll have it out in February. We'll send it out.
So, we'll have to have bids in and vote on by when?
In, in March.
In March, okay.
And we submit that then to the state, and they approve.
They approve it?
Yes.
Any additional questions, discussions? Call a roll, please.
Dr. McFattan.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Motion carry. Item 13, action item, adopted MHSAA annual membership resolution. Support. Any questions or discussion on a motion on the floor? This is a membership for MHSAA for us participating in sports?
Yes, so in order for the high school to participate in sports, all school districts become members of that, and we do this every annually. It's our annual renewal to participate. And this is different from the MAC. We're not part of that.
Any additional questions?
I got one, it's a sidebar, but it's on the same line as renewals. Did we ever renew our MASB contract?
MAS, uh, no, that's a membership.
Yeah, did we ever?
So, it doesn't call for a board resolution, so that's a membership that we do pay annually.
I thought that was, I thought we always brought that up to the board to, I just thought about that, I don't remember.
Isn't it January or September?
Yeah, January, yeah.
Something like that, I remember voting.
Oh, we did, okay.
Be voted on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I, I, I know we get that membership renewal in every June for the next, for the new year, and so we pay that.
Any additional, any additional questions, discussion about item number 13? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Voorhees.
Yes.
Dr. McFattan.
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante.
Yes.
Mr. Brewley.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Motion carry. Informational items. Item 14, letters of agreement.
Yes, thank you. Because we're implementing a couple of programs next year, we establishing a letter of agreement with our unions, the MEA, NEA, Local 1, from Mount Clemens. And one of the letters of agreement is we're looking at the developmental kindergarten in the fall, and that's for our kindergarteners that are not quite ready, you know, for kindergarten. So, it's kind of a bridge. So, students in the developmental kindergarten will receive two years of instruction of kindergarten, and then they will go on to first grade. And we have found a need for this program, and after talking with some of our parents, they are very excited about this program. So, with that, we wanted to make sure we were looking at class sizes because with the young people, sometimes they need, we need to make sure that those class sizes stay at a maximum. So, with the agreement, we are looking at 20, no more than 20 students per class, and if it reaches 21, we've agreed to add a part-time paraprofessional in the classroom. And in the event it exceeds 25 students, get it up to 26, then we will employ a full-time paraprofessional. So, we did agree with the union that we would do that. The other letter of agreement is with our ESE, Polhi, GSRPs, which are our preschool program over at King. One of the programs do not, they do not meet on Fridays. And what has been happening running the two programs in the building, sometimes our parents get confused, and they may send the kids on Friday, and they may not. So, we decided to go with just a straight four-day academic program for the students. So, Monday through Thursday, they will do, do the academics and then not have a prep period during those four days, and that will be on Fridays, that the teachers would meet and have their, do their prep or whatever is needed for their class. So, we did agree with the leadership to do that so that that will cut out the confusion for our parents and even our bus drivers sometimes, so we agreed to do that one. And then the third one was we were looking at the staffing. They had a 40-minute lunch and recess over at Seminole Academy. And so, for the next year and the 2020 school years, they, all the parties have agreed that the students and staff will have a 30-minute lunch period. And there will be a duty-free uninterrupted 30-minute lunch period for the, all of the teachers. And, and then by doing that, the students' day will be, and teacher's day will be shortened by 10 minutes. So, we, again, we agreed to, to those three letters of agreement with our leadership based on need and what is best for students. So, any questions or concerns on those three letters?
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. On to item number 15. And Mr. Monk, I'm gonna be picking your brain on this.
All right.
I'm gonna have Ms., Madam Superintendent take the lead, and I'm gonna put the knockout punch onto it if you can.
All right, well, I'm gonna do a one real quick. So, I'm asking to amend this information item because this does not have all of the policies that are in the minutes. They're not being reflected on the agenda.
For first reading?
For first reading, yes. We have a multiple policies for first reading. 1421, 3121, 3421A, 4121, 4162A. They are reflected in our meeting, in our meeting minutes. I really didn't take a look at the agenda, but they're not, they're not reflected on the agenda. So, I would like to ask that the record show that for first reading policies reflect the policy meeting minutes. So, I would like to ask that the record show that for first reading, um, policies, um, reflect the, uh, policy meeting minutes, um, for all those listed and there for first reading.
Mr. Monk, how many policies are there?
Just give me. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. And then whatever that's on this page.
Hold on one second. Miss, Madam Superintendent, can you give us an explanation, please?
Yes, um, most of the ones that are not reflected, these are the ones that we had on our previous, remember Dr. Peters only came because he wanted to talk about those because he wasn't able to meet, come to our first meeting when, before. So, the board has already.
The, the, yeah, they never, remember, we never did bring him for first reading. And we talked about that. We never brought these, the part, the packet that he, the one that he discussed?
Right.
We never did bring it to the board for first reading.
Okay, I'll go back and look, 'cause I thought that was in April.
No, yeah, we never did have it in, uh, for first reading. 'Cause remember, it was too late. We had our meeting almost, it was either before or either before, we didn't have enough time, 'cause you, we didn't have enough time to put it into the agenda.
Okay. Well, I'm like you now with the brain.
So, what, since this is informational item?
Right.
Right now, it's a good thing, 'cause we're not really voting on it.
Right.
We wanna add those items?
Yes.
For first reading?
For first reading. So, I'll just, I won't say the name, I'll just read them all. Yeah. Um, so for first reading, I'll, uh, we're meant to be submitted for first reading on the informational, uh, item number fifteen. Um, on the agenda would be policy fourteen twenty-one, policy thirty-one twenty-one, policy thirty-four twenty-one A, policy forty-one twenty-one, policy forty-one sixty-two A, policy forty-one sixty-two B, policy forty-four twenty-one A, policy fifty-one eleven, policy fifty-one twelve A, policy fifty-three forty point zero one, policy seventy-four forty point zero two, policy eighty-three twenty-one, policy seventy-five thirty, policy seventy-five thirty A, policy seventy-five forty B, and policy seventy-five forty C.
And we'll send that, those out tomorrow to all of the board.
Along with all those, so, go ahead, Madam Superintendent, your floor now.
I said we'll send those out that you just, to the board members, uh, on tomorrow.
Okay. And, uh, oh, I'll let you, then I'll come on the backside of, uh, Superintendent.
Mr. Monk, those policies, are all those revised policies or any of those new policies by?
Uh, two, two of those policies are deleted. We don't longer have them. Um, two, and, do the, do, just a second here. And one, two, three, four, those policies will be new policies. Um, and, uh, and the majority of the policies, uh, Dr. McFadden, will, are policies that we need to have, uh, revised because of state lettero, state federal and local laws. So, which they need to be done by law. Um, and then the ones that are listed under, we, uh, I had brought those under, I know, I had talked about those at our last meeting under my comments, uh, with the address, uh, change, um, to our, to our district. Um, and then we, uh, adopted at our workshop, the new, uh, evaluation for the superintendent. Um, and then also, the, uh, we revised the personal communication devices. Um, and we discussed that in our policy meeting, so that's why we're submitting that for first reading. Um, and then, uh, one that I believe every board member, uh, wanted to know was the attendance, um, policy. We talked about the attendance policy and we talked about it in detail. Um, and I asked, uh, the superintendent to get back with me on what in every building is being done as far as attendance, especially the high school.
Right.
Um, so, I got a, some notes here, I did have them. Sometimes you be too organized, you can't find them. Um, but roughly what it is that she gave me, and those will be, and those will be reflected in the administrative guidelines. Um, we, we went through the policies, so the policy, and we strengthened the policy is what we did. We strengthened the policy to give it more teeth. Um, but as far as administrative guidelines, it's to enforce the policy that's on the books. So, each building, especially the, um, oh, you see here, uh, I told you, be organized, you can't even, can't find stuff. Um, so the high school, you know, it's, it's a, it's a procedure, um, for tenants in every school. Um, first, kids gotta get here, gotta be recorded, tardies, absence. Um, the policy says they have no more than fifteen, a cumulative either, absences or tardies, before steps start to be taken. Um, in the high school, um, they send out a letter, um, after the fifteen stating, hey, you know what I'm saying, your son, daughter, we need to talk, come in, we need to meet. Um, if that doesn't happen, and we strengthened it after four times, if, 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 if we cannot get the parent after four attempts, then they're audically, then, then there's a referral letter that's automatically sent to the I, to the ISD. Um, then ISD gets involved. Um, and then after that, it kinda comes back to us as far as, uh, a, a attendance contract, um, enforcing everything. Or if they're a special needs person, student, then we'll bring in Stacy Thomason, who was our special needs director, and may, you know, talk about whether their class schedule need to be altered, come at a later time, whatever, okay? So, that's the policy that's at the middle school and high school.
These are, uh, standard operating procedures that they send forth to, uh, the adjunct?
That they are, that these are gonna be written and stolen upon administrative guidelines starting off two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. We hitting them right out the gate.
And those procedures that?
For high school, middle school.
Those SOPs that you have there are gonna be set up with this policy for our first reading review?
Right. Uh, and then the Seminole, um, there's a little bit more stricter, after six days, miss, uh, a semester, uh, the teacher con, you know, contacts, the teacher sends out a letter. Uh, again, for us, for our policy set, you only get sent out four. Um, so, once they reach that four, um, um, threshold, again, letter gets sent to the ISD, ISD gets involved, then comes back to us. Tennis contract, special needs students, look at the schedules, whatnot, um, and, and then, uh, it's, it's enforced. Um, and then, after that, our language and our policy says that after all those measures are done, we're referring to a truancy officer.
Now, Mr. Monk, those, um, SOPs that you received there, are those from the building administrators or that's something from you, um?
That is from the building, uh, administrators. That, uh, the processes that, um, there.
And these here, uh, reflect flexibility by the building administrators or these are gonna be in the policy itself?
No, no, actually, that is what they are doing right now, so that is, those are the guidelines. That we were for that policy. Yes.
Roger that.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, like I said, we did strengthen, we strengthened our policy, um, because that's the, that's the rock. We strengthened our policy to give it more teeth, to give, um, our building administrators, our superintendent, more flexibility, um, to actually, you know, enforce the attendance the way it should be.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Monk.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions or comments, discussions, or anything like that? I know this is not a motion, but it's open.
I, I just would ask someone to check and see whether you can really.
Make that a policy.
Well, no, have, have the, without them being here, whether it can be a first reading? I mean, by just reading the number?
The policy itself, you're talking about?
Yeah, can that, I, it's a procedural question. So, Jason had a bunch of policies that aren't sent to us. Can that really be a first reading? I would.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying. We haven't had a chance to hear.
It's fine with me.
Right.
Personally, but I don't know that you could really do that. You should, there's a.
You know what, Mr. Brooley, I'll be a hundred percent.
Check it out and see if that's real or not. If it is, it's okay, if it isn't, we need to fix it.
Well, why don't we just do this right now? The policy is on this list, just take those as first reading. And those additional ones that you submitted tonight, bring it to the next board meeting for first reading. But these, these will come up as second reading for next board meeting. And those additional will come up as first reading.
Because this, what I read to you as far as our minutes, that is in the board packet.
Right, and I saw that. And then I couldn't find it.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
I saw that, and then I.
It's at the end, yeah.
So, anyway, so we do that, that's all.
I mean, do we know it and it's fair? But since we don't have that on this agenda.
Right, on the agenda.
Let's just move that to first reading for next, next board meeting.
Okay.
Madam Superintendent.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooley. We're moving right along, item number sixteen, May financial report.
Okay. Okay. Um, in your packet, um, I think it's listed as page ninety, uh, we have the May financials, um, uh, operation results for the month of May. And the first one that you have would be the general fund, uh, as of May thirty-one. We had collected eleven million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, ninety-seven dollars in revenue. And expenditures at that time, we were at ten million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty. And operating, um, net results is nine hundred and one million dollars, uh, nine hundred and one thousand dollars, um, in deposit as of May thirty-one. We also have the cash flow, um, in there through the end of, um, May. The last Friday was May twenty-fifth. And at that time, our ending cash balance was two point two million dollars. And that just means that all of our, um, all of the checks had not been presented to the bankers at that time. Also included in the packet is the grant, um, fund to show what we had collected thus far through the year. Um, we were at, um, one million, eight hundred eighty-nine, one hundred, eight hundred, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars collected. And expenditures at, uh, two million, sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-one. And again, we spend the, um, make the purchases and then we get reimbursed. So, that's always, um, behind until at the, um, end of the year when, uh, in August, we get our last payments. So, that would be reflected. The next, uh, report that you have is the operating results from food service. And we had, uh, collected seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six, uh, dollars in revenues. And we, the expenditures are at six hundred, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. So, net operating results as of May thirty-one, we're at one hundred and eleven thousand dollars to the good in food service. And then the last, um, report was the debt service. Um, as of May thirty-one, we had, uh, collected six hundred, I'm sorry, six million, two hundred ninety-six thousand. And we had, uh, spent out six million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand. And we do still have a little bit to collect and, um, from the, uh, from the clerk, uh, the count, uh, the city clerk, uh, in the, uh, balance of our tax. Okay. So, that is, um, the operating results, um, with all of our funds. The next report you see is the EDEP, we do still report to the, to Treasury. And again, EDEP is, um, the, um, Enhanced Deficit Elimination Plan. Until we have a couple of years out of, uh, deficit, we still report to Treasury. Uh, they are interested in our, um, operating results. So, it's just the same information I, uh, showed you for the general fund, just, um, in their, the format that they require. And you do get this, uh, monthly as well. Any questions concerning the May financials? And we did discuss this at the, uh, during the business meeting last week.
Okay. Open purchase order listing, item seventeen.
Okay. Um, you do have a listing of all of the, um, purchase orders that were still open as of May thirty-one. Um, now that the audit will be getting underway, um, starting tomorrow, uh, we'll be tightening this up and, um, closing out the ones that we, um, that we can and that we will not be using. But this is what was open as of May thirty-first. And we do report this to the board each month and we go over it in, um, detailed discussion at the finance meeting, which again, we discussed last, uh, week. So, any questions concerning any of the open POs?
Item eighteen, contract listing, please.
Okay. Contract listing. Um, you also at your desk, you received, um, the contract listing, uh, report that you get each month. And I apologize that, um, I, uh, it was omitted in the packet, but this is the listing that you get each month, um, showing what, uh, the contracts that we have out with individuals or with, um, various vendors. And so, it's a listing that shows, uh, when they expire and the terms, um, and of those contracts. So, um, this is, uh, it, it didn't change from the previous month, but I'd like to make sure that you get that as well. And it is presented, was presented at the finance committee meeting. And part of contract listings, we also show our, our workers' comp claim, it's called the, uh, loss analysis, and that's page one twenty-seven. And as you can see, we do not have any open claims out for workers' comp. The next report you see is a claims detail report from, uh, Middle Cities. And those are claims that, um, in, that may be in litigation and, um, or what we have outstanding. And on that one, the next month will reflect that we did have two out in litig, that were in litigation, uh, through our insurance company. And they did settle those two out of court. So, um, the maximum cost that we ever see is twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, anyway, those have been resolved and, so we have one out there now that is outstanding, that we're, um, we're still look, trying to resolve, so. And those reports are also at the finance committee.
Thank you much. That ends informational items. Now, we're going on to item nineteen, this, uh, which is brought, uh, before the board by Mr. Brooley earlier, discuss the future board workshops. Uh, Mr. Brooley, you wanna?
Yeah, I, I would like to move to have a workshop that would deal principally with two issues. Uh, I'm open to others, but I think it'd be specific. One, there were a couple incidents at the school that I think that we as a board need to more fully explore and understand. Um, so, I like that. And then, secondly, um, we had a good discussion at the curriculum meeting. And melted into the finance meeting about attendance. Um, I think what, what Jason has done is really good. That sort of a way to mitigate once actions have happened. I would like to see a plan from the principals on how to prevent it from happening. I mean, that sort of answers, well, what if a kid misses fifteen? I would like to see, what we don't have is a plan, how do we prevent the kids from getting fifteen? So, we have a plan now that, that, so if they're there, we'll deal with it. But we have to look how, we had a lot of good suggestions, talked about that, but we still, I don't think, have the school principals engaged in, how do we prevent this? What are your biggest problems? Right, exactly. And so, I think we need, and I think the incidents and this issue are almost, they have similar. Interest in it. And, and I think we need to have a, a workshop on that.
Are you recommending two separate workshops?
No, I think we can do it the same night, but instead aside, okay, we're gonna spend an hour doing this, we're gonna set aside an hour doing that, limit our time, make it focused on, rather than random, and explain what you saw happen, let us feedback, and then we can go from there. But I, but I think that there are elements of both those things that are interconnected.
And when you said, explain what, you're talking about having the principals, building supervisors there?
I'm, I'm open to just have the superintendent. I'm also very open to having the principals there. Because I think this is a building level, uh, piece, and I think that we need to have some interchange about what they see as a problem and what we see as a problem. Are we seeing the reality, are, and they explain to us better from their vantage point, what is the problem here? Because we came up with, in curriculum, we had that exchange, and I think we learned, and I think they learned.
Now, Mr. Brooley, on that, um, incident, I talked about the tenants, is there other incidents that like, is there a certain topic to it or just?
Well, there were two, there were two incidents that I think we need. Well, there were two, there were two incidents that I think we need to explore. I don't have a name for them, but other than.
But they kinda tie together, though.
I think so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I think so.
Alright, well, Mr. Brody moved to have an additional workshop.
And I would like to get a date and time out of us before we leave.
And we wanna discuss a date and time, so basically, right now, the motion is that we'd like to have a, a workshop, and before we have a discussion, let's get the motion on the floor. He moved, I support, now we can have a discussion, question, and figure out how to the date, time, and location, I think that probably the best way of doing it, since the motion's on the floor, so, the sooner the better, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I think so.
Right, so probably this month, maybe, the next couple of weeks, are you out of town?
Yes, until the tenth.
So you're saying not this month?
Well, 'cause that would be next week.
That's okay, that's, I'm just asking, so.
Yeah, no, that's what, yes.
Let me ask you something. What is their schedule? Are they on vacation or the principals?
They do work year-round like we do, and they do take vacation. Usually, they take it the last week of June, first week of July, and so those are the two weeks, you know, that people are looking at taking, and then there are some days, you know, during August that they might take, but they work year-round like us, so they usually wait until the summer to take, for the most part.
Well, I'm open to when's convenient, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, if they're gone the last, in the beginning of July, what about the week after the fourth?
I can check and see who's available, 'cause I don't have their schedules.
Well, no, no, I wouldn't expect you would, but I'm with us. What, what would our availability be then?
I'm just out of town, I'm, I'm golfing, beginning of August, so.
No, no, this would be July.
Oh, okay.
No, no.
So the week of the ninth.
Right, well, I don't know what that Monday is after the fourth.
The ninth.
I mean, if we can give her two or three dates.
Yeah, that's the ninth.
The ninth, the tenth.
I'm good, so, I'll work at ten, so, whatever day's good for me.
I think I'm pretty open that week, seriously. I can't believe I'm saying that.
I'm not working at all, so, maybe, should we make it earlier?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Maybe six or five?
Five, probably, yeah.
So that Monday?
Monday the ninth?
Yeah, Monday's good, yeah, I know, we have our, our policy meeting is gonna be on the eleventh, so, Monday's good for me. Yeah, we can do it earlier, five, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, ninth at five?
Oh, I thought you guys were talking like at nine in the morning, okay. I was glad we did that.
First line?
Fresh, hot out of the oven.
At five P.M., correct? Is that what we're?
We can do, maybe, Jimmy, Jimmy, Jim.
Okay, yeah, we'll do that.
Well, yeah, we don't need, yeah, we, it's fine to do it, but we don't have to either.
Yeah, we don't have to do it, but if you can do it that way.
Yeah, and that'll be here, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we can make that happen.
I think also, we need to, maybe, you know, I don't wanna make that meeting too late, but we need to just talk about the superintendent's evaluation, I know there's some, some questions out there, you know, what's the, you know, what, what timeframe that we're on.
Well, apparently, it was, it's December.
Huh?
It's December, January, it's like that we do it.
January, December, yeah.
Yeah.
January, December, then there's, this meeting was supposed to have been one of the, the.
It is, I, I do an update to you tonight, and then I think my next one is in August. I think it's at August.
August, it's informal.
Right.
Yeah, August is informal, yeah.
So, we're talking about Monday, the ninth?
Monday the ninth.
At five?
At five, is that viable?
Monday the ninth is great, five o'clock is not, anything after six would be better for me, but don't let me be the, the cell to make this boat sail, like that. If you wanna start at five-thirty, be better, I can try to make it here sooner than later, but six o'clock is probably my hard time.
We just say those times, so you'll come up with a cute saying.
Right.
'Cause you're so good at it.
Boat sailing this term.
I'll have to write that down with my big pen.
Here we go again.
Okay, let's keep focusing.
Monday the ninth, right? Monday, July ninth?
What time? I don't care.
Can we push six-thirty? It's only an hour and a half after five.
Six-thirty, but I got, you know, I gotta, I gotta leave, so.
What time do you have to leave?
I left at nine o'clock last time, and I was pushing it, so I gotta be out of, I gotta be gone by eight-thirty.
What if you start at like five-thirty?
Yeah, and then by the time you get there.
I'd be a little late. It'll be here, right?
Yeah, yes.
That's fine.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty, alright.
Like I said, don't, don't let me be the guy to. Make the curtain come down.
Yes, definitely. I'm gonna call him.
But right now, July ninth, everyone in town?
Yeah, yeah, no, we're all set.
Everybody's in town, okay? Okay, so, that's the motion on the floor, I support it. Any other questions, discussions? The location's gonna be here?
Yep.
Cut roll, please.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, Madam Superintendent, this is your portion where you have superintendent's comments.
Alright, I have a few things to, I'll start off with the, an update on the expectations that we discussed, that I have to report on, and the first one is, let's see. And of course, anything that was in red on, on the evaluation tool, I'm responsible for anyway, and the first one is in section B, which is community relations, and that's parent feedback, and what I'm doing with that is, the, along with the board members, we are to coordinate a time to set aside, what we call coffee talks, and so we do still have to set that up, what day and how often you want to do that, to invite the community in to hear what they have to say, and express their voice, and bring us up to date on things that they are, that are important to them. I've also installed suggestion boxes in all of the buildings, and it's not only for parent feedback, but it's for staff and students, so any suggestions that they have of, on any topic that we can address, those are in place, and they've been in place about two weeks now. We put it on a colorful background, so it would catch people's eye once they walked in the door, so we're looking at that for feedback. I do get phone calls from parents, and I address those concerns that they have anytime that they call, and so I do get good feedback from them concerning their issues, good, bad, indifferent, I get across the board on that one. So, that is still in development phase, getting and seeking parent feedback, okay? So that was the first one. The second one, Ben addresses in section C, which was staff relations, and that is the staff feedback, and again, we're looking at, the suggestion boxes are out there, and staff do, they will call, email, accompany me in person about any concerns, good, bad, or indifferent. Like I said, the suggestion box, also, we are installing the blueprint model, and part of that model is having an open-door policy, so on the team, we have a cross-section of staff members, they're administrators, peer professionals, we have teachers representative from the custodial maintenance, also from food service, let's see, and I think that's it. So we have a cross-section of all of the staff giving input of how we go about doing our business, and that's even from the way we communicate with each other, and so they do attend professional development or workshops that are put on by the blueprint group out of Lansing, and they pay for the full, so we don't have to incur any costs other than travel there. And an important training coming up in October is for board members that want to know anything about the blueprint, that's gonna be a workshop, so as soon as I get all the information on that, I will share that with the board, and they look at districts, that is like in our situation, as saving our children, saving lives, because if students do not receive quality education, that does have a huge impact on opportunities that they have once they get out of high school or, or decide not to even finish high school. So we want to make sure that we understand that our district is, our children's lives are in crisis, and we have to do what we need to do to make sure that we're providing a quality education for them, and they have you reflect back and look at what you are doing, and take inventory on what's happening in your buildings and in the classroom, and in the community, and meeting the needs of our students, and the biggest part of that is called pastoral care, so as I get more information about the board workshop piece, and that would be in Lansing, well, it will be in Lansing, and it will, they will be, that will be held in October, I'll also ask our district, cause it's kinda like our district assistant to help us, she's gonna come into the district probably in September, and to give us and, the board, an update on how that works and what we're doing right now as a district moving forward, so that would be, that's how we're involving staff feedback.
Do we ask you questions now, or do you?
Oh, you can ask as I go.
Okay, what's, how would you categorize, categorize the overall staff environment in the district?
Overall, I believe that we have people here that really want to be here and are engaged and want to help our students, and just like within an organization, we have some areas that we do need to improve, and we do need to assist staff with and getting where we need to be, as far as helping our students and getting our assessment scores up, that's a huge piece for me, looking at serving our students as well as our parents, to make sure that, you know, they want to be here, and so we have some areas that we are working on, but the staff that I talk to, and yes, they have some concerns, some feel that, you know, we're on the right track, and they're, especially with the blueprint piece, they're excited about the possibilities of, that someone coming alongside us and helping us with this hard and serious work, and so we're working on some things, but overall, I believe that our staff want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for kids, and they need assistance, so we're looking at ways to make sure we provide that assistance, and again, with the blueprint, it hasn't laid out plainly, this is, and it's research-based, so that's a big piece for me, that it is research-based, and as I'm talking with districts across the state, it is a proven installation that brings about success. We had a workshop last, I believe it was last Monday, I get my days mixed up, 'cause they all have the same to me, but I was talking with a superintendent, and she said that we are the exact same as where they were, and in two years, she brought her district, and because of the hard work that the staff committed to with the blueprint, she said in two years, they were able to come from the very bottom of the state assessment, with low scores, to now she's an exemplary school district, and the, the national, what is it, oh, education, oh, I forget, at the federal level, I'm having a brain freeze right now, but the federal, at the federal level, they want to come in and do a story about her school and how they were able to move their kids from the bottom to the top ten, and she said, the thing about that was, they did it in such a great way that now the state wanted to take back some of their funding, and she eventually was able to convince them to let them stay with the blueprint, because it's a lot of support there, and they, they had just gotten started, so why snatch away the very thing, tool that they were using to make themselves successful? So I hear great stories like that all the time, about people, districts implementing the blueprint, and the state does support it, so we're already a bit ahead of the game, because instead of them coming and saying, this is what you need to do.
Right.
We decided, well, I decided that this was very important, and that brought the, got the team together, and, and I think we had our first meeting in December at the state.
And when, I know I asked you this question in, in our policy, you know, when is, when is, when is the boots on the ground?
And again, this is a process, so talking, when it first started out with the blueprint, they said anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months, and we've had, we're in cohort number five, so after about the third cohort, they realized this is more than a eighteen to twenty-four month, so they moved it from a twenty-four month to a thirty-six month process, to really get your feet dug into the sand and, and looking at. Yes, three years out, because remember, you know, we didn't, it's kinda, to me, it's kinda like when you're deciding to diet, get rid of some weight, it takes us a long time to put all the weight on, and then we want it to be fixed in a couple of months, it doesn't happen that way, it's, it's a process that you go through, and so they realize now that it, it does take some time, you know, to get your, everybody on board and realize, this is what we're doing, and we have to take serious steps to make sure, and as they put it, save our kids, and when you look at the overall impact, it truly is saving our kids and doing what's best for students. And unfortunately, that's something that's just in Mount Clemens, it is not only a county, state, but it's a national issue that we have with public education, that we're kinda, we've regressed over the years, instead of us setting the tone for the world, now we're looking in other countries to see what they are doing, to make sure that we don't let our kids get left behind.
Madam Superintendent, this section that we're talking about, now this is the staff relationship?
Yes.
Now, staff relationship, I know we have the evaluation process, is there a corrective procedure in place for not only a staff is, okay, I see you acting up, in six months, you're gonna get evaluated at zero, is there a phase between zero to one hundred where they get corrective measures, or is it just the evaluation and nothing else? I mean, is our staff receiving support, correct, if you're false?
Corrective procedure.
Yes, and, yes, I, with, especially in a classroom, the administrators have to go and do observations, and there are so many that they have to do during the year and set up, and help them implement plans to improve, and I did not have anything like that in place for our administrators for this year, this was my, okay, seeing how everything works in this position, so going forward, I will be having, I do meet with staff every week, okay, we do, every Friday, that's our time to, you know, see how the week went, what day incurred, and how, how I can best help them, so going forward, and as issues came up, I would address them, but we'll do a little. I would address them. But we'll do a little bit more formal along those lines in the coming year, that at least once a month, we'll do a welfare check, if you will, on things that I, I'm going to be requesting of them in their evaluation now for the next school year. And then we'll do a, like I said, a welfare check monthly, that specifically. And if we do it more often, that's fine too. But I want to make sure that at least once a month is designated time to say, how are we doing? Okay?
And you want to ask the building administrators how we're doing, or you want to ask the people that are getting evaluated how we're doing?
Oh, I would be evaluating the building administrators. So anyone that, that I evaluate, and I believe I have a total of about 11 altogether, I don't know how they look at the number. So those are the folks that I will be doing the welfare check. But the building administrators do welfare checks with their staff, with the teaching staff. And I suggested to some of our para-pros, because sometimes they feel that, you know, that it is only at the end of the year. And so I requested them to take an active role and don't wait until the administrator comes to you. You can go to them. And again, I'm just looking back over the experience I've had outside of Mount Clemens, the other positions I've held. I would always, I was the proactive one to go ask, okay, this is what you had requested, how am I doing? What do I need to change? Or what am I doing correctly that is, that you approve of? So I suggested to our para-professionals and other hourly people that you don't have to wait until the administrator comes to you. You can very easily go ask for a welfare check. How am I doing? So hopefully, they will be doing that. But again, the building principals, administrators do have to do so many evaluations, observations throughout the year and give feedback so that, to help people.
Really, I asked that question because I know we're looking at the students, and I know when the student get a bad grade, they go back and say, well, this is what you did wrong. Let's fix this. I don't want our teachers to be penalized because the student didn't make the progress. And we tell them, evaluate them at the end, or any, any of our staff members, and say, well, you didn't give me the tools to fix my actions. And I didn't know I was doing something wrong until I got evaluated. That's not fair. So on behalf of our staff and the students, I think we need to support both of them. But I don't want to eat up some time because I know Mr. Monk has some things he's got to do tonight.
Well, no, she just, she just talked about E1, so E1 is done.
Yeah, that was C.
Performance Evaluation Systems, yeah.
Right. And again, this is my first year at doing evaluations for administrators. So I did have lots of conversations with our legal concerning this process and all of that. So they've given me some really good feedback on different ways that I can make sure that all folks are successful. So, and I'll share those with you later. But I know, I don't know everything, and I'll make sure I tell staff, you know, there are things I don't know, and I don't mind saying I don't know. And if you have expertise on it, we're a team. So let's hope each other makes sure that all of our students are successful.
I have one question for you, and I'm saying this because I'm going to have to leave and go to the board.
Okay.
Are you going to submit a detailed report to the, to the board? Because this is, this is one of the, this is the formal one. So you submit a report out, because I won't be here for all of it, that's why. That way I can read it.
Okay, I'll, I'll put something in writing.
Okay, all right. Okay, how much more do you have to go on this?
It's two, you got two more?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Under D, Business and Finance. Of course, the ultimate evidence of that is our audit. And again, I, that's just getting underway. But I do submit a monthly financial report to the board and show you how we're doing. I also submit, or we discuss facilities. I give you an update on what's going on with that, or any issues that we've had, or improvements that we've made. I do do that on a monthly basis. And our budgets have to have board approval. So anytime there's a change, like we did tonight, we, you approved the final budget for the current year, and you approved the new budget for the 2019 school year. So that's how that is being measured. And that's under D. And then under E, there were three things that were there. The first one is E1, which is Performance Evaluation System. And we do use advanced ed software to do our evaluations for administration. And I just finished the last one tonight. I did have a pre-evaluation meeting with each of the administrators. There were some questions that I had that I wasn't sure about what was being asked. And, because they do a pre-evaluation first, they do a self-evaluation, and then it comes to me. So they finish those up sometimes, I believe it was on Sunday. So I was going over, and I did my evaluation. And again, I reached out to legal to make sure that I had a good understanding of what was the steps to take in, in that process. Okay, E6 is Student Feedback. Again, we use the, the suggestion boxes that we have out front in each building. I also have students contact me. Usually, they'll come to my office. Or when I go to other buildings, students do come up to me and talk about, or just share things. So we're doing that. We also have Student Action Team. And that's, that's over here at the high school, where we have, I think, Mr., who was, Mr. Gibson helped start, had that up. We also have the Travel Club, which Mr. Brewley had started, and those kids do share a lot in that one. And I do participate in that as much as possible. Again, an open door policy where students can come in. We also have a number of community partners that come in and help with our students. And from pieces that Terry McCoy is doing, and pieces that the building principal, Mr. Gibson, is doing. He, I think it was Mr. Pete, and at the time, I'm losing his last name, but he's our basketball coach.
Trammell.
Yeah, Trammell, thank you. He had asked, he said he always has something for boys, but he wanted to find something for girls to balance in it on. And he contacted a, it was a group in Southville, and it's called Jack and Jill. And so we had, they brought those ladies in in January. And they were mentors, they were mentoring about 14 of our students, and they are high school students. And they had such a huge impact on the ladies, just talking about life skills and different issues that's been going on in their life, that the students were so impressed that they do not want to open it up to other students in the fall, because they had a really good bond with them, sharing a lot of personal things. And if anybody wants to see, this is a book that they had put together of the different things that they did during, from January to, I believe it was mid-May was their last session. And it's a really nice book. They said they were trying to, this is the group, the Jack and Jill, of Northern Oakland and McComb Chapter. And these ladies come in, it was consistently about four that would come in each month. But anyway, meeting with these ladies, the, our students were, had some life-changing events that happened to them. So they wanted to put something together that the students could reflect on. And it's very nicely done. So they'll be looking at, you know, reflecting on that during the summer. So that was the student feedback. And as far as student attendance, we are reviewing the process. And Mr. Monk went over that earlier, looking at our policies and what is happening in each of the buildings. So with that, that is the evaluation piece of, yes, I do have comments, but I wanted to make sure I did that piece first. Okay. Okay. Okay, comments. Okay, again, I want to just remind you that we are doing our, the pre-audit or preliminary audit, it was scheduled for tomorrow. So they should be here on Thursday and Friday. So we're getting that underway. Planning for next year's, let's see. And I want to congratulate our class of 2018, our seniors. It was a wonderful graduation that we had. It was, this year it was over in the gym, and it was very nicely decorated and wonderfully attended. To me, it was even a larger crowd. We filled the gym. So it was, it was a really nice celebration for those students. I also want to congratulate the GSRP students at King, our preschoolers at King. We had our little fourth graders graduate, so they will be kindergarteners next year. There was also the kindergarten celebration, graduation at Seminole, where those students graduated from kindergarten to first grade. So we're excited about those students. And our fifth graders at Seminole, which is the class of 2025. So we're so proud of those students. And with that, we did have our first sixth grade meet and greet. We call it chilling and grilling. And it was a success. We had right around 13 families to participate. And that ended up being right around 75, 80 people altogether. So it was very well-attended. We got great feedback. Some of our teachers volunteered to be a part of that. And they spoke about the curriculum that, piece that they each handle. They also talked about the sports and electives that we have available. So we did get really good feedback from both the parents and the students. They were excited that we did it. And even the staff was excited about that. So we will be doing that annually, inviting our graduating fifth graders over to here to have a little cookout. And they also toured the building where they would be, and they asked questions about how that worked with the high schoolers and the middle schoolers. And they were, they, after the visit, they realized that the kids don't mingle. They have two completely different lunchtimes. So they were pleased about that, to know that the first floor is dedicated to our middle schoolers and the high schoolers are upstairs. So again, it was really great feedback. And our staff is excited to, and they even want to start planning for next year. So I told them that we would do that, starting in October, starting getting, looking forward to planning that. So that was good. Our last day of school was June 15th, and we definitely want to wish everyone a safe and happy summer. We did have a successful school year-end launching for the staff over here at the secondary complex. And Mr. Gibson puts that on every year. It was very well-attended. It was a beautiful day. I think that was one of our 90s days. But it was beautiful outside, and, and people did kind of linger. So that was nice, that one. Let's see. And that was on June the 14th, that was a Thursday. The Optimus Club Breakfast Event was a success, and we greatly appreciate all of our partners, community partners that help us in the district. We have a number of community partners. So I don't want to miss any names or anything, but I just want to say thank you to all of our partners that so diligently help us with our students on any level. So thank you to them. Also, the field day at both the elementary and middle schools, those were successes that happened on June the 1st. At elementary, all of the students had the class of whatever they were, year that they were expected to graduate. So that was really, bright rainbow, rainbow colors. So it was beautiful, again. So each year, that is huge. Again, a reminder that we have in the developmental kindergarten program starting in the fall, and there is a flyer for that. And of course, our parade will be, and I believe it's going to be in October. So we're going to start planning that this summer. So we'll be contacting parents and staff to help us get started on that. So that we're going to have a huge kickoff of that in the summer, on that one. And then two last things. We have, you know, so many partners helping us with the work that needs to be done. And I just want to recognize two of our board members that have gone, we believe, above and beyond. The first one is for Ms. Christina Escalante, for the Lego Club and the Spanish Clubs that she has implemented this past school year. And one of them, I believe, we have like 20-something students, and the other one is about 40 students, that she has been diligently supporting and being there for the kids. And I know there's time away from your family, but we just want to say thank you so much for the time that you spent with those students. And I know you did have to give up some other things. So it hasn't been signed yet, but I want to share with you that it does say, "Certificate of Appreciation is hereby awarded to Christina Escalante, Mount Clemens Community Schools Lego Club and Spanish Clubs, recognizing our deep appreciation for your leadership and exemplary dedication as valued members, member serving the Mount Clemens Community School District for the 2017 and 18 school year." So this is just a replica of what we will be getting to you. So I just wanted to say thank you. And then the other one is for the Travel Club. We had two people up spearheading that with, you know, tenacity. They were diligent in making sure that even when we fell behind on what we needed to do, he still plunged ahead. And he also had a partner. So this is one that's going to Mr. Eric Brewley. And then his partner was Kathy Banks, that, you know, they came in and the kids participated. They stayed on the kids, they stayed on me, they stayed on our staff when, you know, things looked like it was going a little too slow. But, and he's found a way to, any of the trips the kids went on, he found sponsors to pay for the trips that they've gone on. And the kids have been exciting. They've had experiences that they say that they never would have had, had he not been dogmatic in making sure that this Travel Club got underway. So they're even planning some things for the summer. By some kind of way, he finds ways to pay for this and, and get the kids buying. So I want to say thank you to Mr. Brewley and his assistant, Kathy Banks, for implementing to, and, and bringing the Travel Club to our 10th graders. So thank you so much, Mr. Brewley and Ms. Kathy Banks. And with that, I know we will be bringing on Key Club this year. I'll be working with Mrs. Walker on that. And we are excited to be bringing that on. So that will be another opportunity for our students. And we are coordinating that. So we'll finalize that during the summer, so that when the kids come in September, they walk in the door, we'll be ready to go.
We're ready to go.
So we're excited about that. So we do appreciate the extra time that board members do put in, you know, coming in on a consistent basis, helping and working with our students, because we know you have lives outside of the building, but you, you are volunteering your time above and beyond. So we just want us to make sure that we said thank you for your service. And with that, that's it. No, one last thing. We are working with our legal team on the current center. So they have a report, and we will make sure that I put on the board agenda the next time, an opportunity for them to come in and give us an update. But if anybody wants to read any of this, it's-
What, about a three inch, at least two and a half?
Inches of paperwork that we can review at any time. It's confidential. So if anyone wants to review that, it'll be in my office. But I will make sure that they are on the agenda at the next board meeting. Now that concludes my-
Well, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Now we move on to committee reports. Business Committee.
Okay. We met on June 12th. The superintendent was there, as was Mr. Brewley, Mrs. Escalante, and myself. Everything we covered- Everything we covered has already been, we covered tonight, we went over the financial report, payment of bills, purchase order listing, contract listing, the budget amendment, the millage levy, the proposed budget for eighteen nineteen, the eighteen mil renewal, facilities update. Um, everything was in order and, uh, we adjourned after two and a half hours. And it was a lovely meeting and we're meeting again on Tuesday, July tenth. Everything looked wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any questions for Ms. Walker? My two board members, Mr. Walker.
Drifting, it was cold over here.
Okay. Now we move on to Policy Committee, but our chair is not here. Does anybody sit in that Policy Committee with him?
Yes.
I was at, actually, I was at Eva's graduation.
Oh, that's, and, um, he did cover what we talked about when, um, we were talking about policy. So, and it is a copy in your minute, in your, um, packet. But, um, everything we talked about, um, he did cover that when he was here earlier. So, and we adjourned at one fifty-one.
Ms. Nanberg, uh, Community Coalition Committee.
Yeah, we, obviously we've concluded our activities for this, uh, school year. We will be resuming in the fall with our first Drug Takeback Day. Again, we'll be doing two real talks, or at least we're planning to do two Real Talk Events next school year with another career fair. Uh, during the summer, we'll be moving up to one o'clock, our meeting time. So the fourth Wednesday at one o'clock during the summer, so if anybody wants to join us, we're trying to expedite that a little bit, enjoy more sunshine. And, uh, one of the focuses for the summer is going to be a, uh, signature fundraiser for the year, for the Coalition. So I went online, I found a list of ninety-nine fund fundraisers for nonprofit organizations. We're gonna kind of go through those. And, uh, I would like to at least raise five thousand a year to cover all of our activities and have a scholarship for at least one graduating senior. Who is either a T-three member or the school's, you know, a, a young person. We'd like to be able to offer them some type of scholarship moving forward on behalf of the Coalition. So that's one of the things, that's one of my personal goals and I'm trying to convince Coalition to make that a goal, that we really raise at least five thousand on our own so we can cover all of our activities and have money to give to a student as they graduate. So if you have any, any input on your guys' behalf, we'd love to have it. And again, we meet, we meet the fourth Wednesday of the month. And during the summer, June, July and August, we'll be at one o'clock, not at our usual three.
That's right here at the high school.
Correct. We usually meet in the College and Career Room, but because the chess club's in here, but now the chess club's not here, we might space, room out a little bit, you know? Our, our group is getting large, so it's nice. We have, uh, a full room every week or every month, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Legislation. You want to have Ms. Rickman?
Yeah, and we didn't, um, I, I didn't hear back from him, so.
There was no legislative meeting this week, I don't know.
No. He usually goes to the meetings.
Okay.
So.
Ms. Rickman's not here to speak on that piece. So let's move on to Curriculum and Personnel Committee. Who's the chair? I know, I'm the chair. But I wasn't there this week. Who was there?
And we were, and, and we talked about that, uh, in the, uh, during the board, um, comments. So one of the things we talked about is, um, you know, tightening up language in our contracts and, uh, non-union contracts and how we would, um, lay that out. Also, the, um, evaluation process. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm finishing up that, uh, I did the last one right before here, so I'll be delivering those. But we did have pre, um, meetings, pre-evaluation meetings to clear up some items for me. Let's see. And that also included next year's budget because everything, uh, is based on our numbers. So we did talk about, um, the possible layoffs or what we call safety layoffs in, um, in the summer. Notices anyway.
I am the committee chair and was not there. Uh, Athletics, it's ad hoc committee. We had nothing pertinent come onto the table, so there was no meeting for Athletics. Uh, next is Educational Foundation Commitment. Is that Mr. Rickman again?
Yeah, that's right.
Ms. Rickman's not here to speak on that behalf, so we will bypass Education Financial Commitment. Board Comments. We will go to my right. Mr. Voorhees.
I would just like to say that, um, the graduation ceremony was tremendous. It, uh, first time in the gym that I recall. But they did it, the people who put that on the stand and, and I, and I may be a little on this side, but they did it just a superb job. And, um, I, you know, I, I, I'm very proud of our, you know, all Clemens graduates and I hope that, you know, they have the same pride that I have in this kind, in this school. And, uh, with that said, well, I guess, I want to say that, um, it was nice to have break your son to the board meeting day. And I know that one day, Mr. Escalante will probably be sitting at his table following his mother. So, is he a politician?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
What a nation, man.
Thank you.
Anyway, with that said, once a bather, always a bather.
Right, thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Ms. Escalante.
Um, so I want to congratulate the graduates. Uh, I'll just piggyback off of Glenn, the ceremony was beautiful. I couldn't have been more proud of all of you. And I also want to thank your parents for supporting you and encouraging you, uh, your parents or your grandparents, aunts, uncles, whoever was behind you, encouraging you to graduate. That's, they deserve a huge thank you as well because they play a huge role in it. Um, you should be proud. And I hope that you guys all have a happy, safe summer. Um, I remember when I graduated from high school, I was like, oh, I'm done with school, but you're really not. If you're, if you're going to college or trade school or whatever it might be, just get focused and, and continue reaching for your goals. Um, don't let anybody stop you. Um, thank you, Teresa, for this recognition. That was really sweet. And I just have to say that it's been, I think it's been more beneficial to me to have done it than for me to have done it for the kids. I've learned from them. Um, we have some amazing kids in this district. Um, if you want to learn humility, come and work with our kids. Um, you might think you know everything, work with our kids and you'll realize really quick that you don't. Um, and they'll teach you if you let them. So, um, it's been an honor to do these clubs and I plan on continuing in the fall. And, um, you know, I encourage anybody in our community that is vested in this district to get involved. It's really easy to look at everything maybe we don't have to offer right now. Um, but at the end of the day, if you're not going to be part of the solution to help while we're trying to get out of deficit, then it's probably better not to say anything because it discourages the ones that are here that are really trying to, um, make things better and make it positive while, while we're really working towards, um, a better future for the kids and the staff and everybody in this district. So I encourage you to get involved because it'll, it'll, uh, it'll change you for the better. Um, and with that, uh, again, have a happy, safe summer and, um, kids, don't drive your parents too crazy. I have three at home, so yeah, I was gonna say. It's only, it's not even been a week and I'm already like, oh, boy. When is September fourth? Like, I see the fourth, I already know we're going back on the fourth. So anyways, have a great summer and once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante.
You are welcome.
And thank your family too, your husband, everybody else.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations to the class of two thousand and eighteen. That was a beautiful, beautiful graduation ceremony. We are so proud of you, so proud of what you've accomplished. They were happy, they, it was just absolutely wonderful, absolutely wonderful. And to all our students, another year. There's been award ceremonies at Seminole and things here and we're proud of everyone's accomplishments. It's been a good year. The Optimist Breakfast was wonderful. It was just nice being with the kids and seeing those kids get an award. That was outstanding. And the Key Club is starting in the fall, like the superintendent said, for high school. And there's also a Builders Club component for the middle schoolers.
Oh, okay.
That will also be, so for all of our kids coming over here from Seminole, that is, will be exciting as well. There's another component. So hopefully both will be up and running in September, high school for sure. If not, middle school will be right behind it. So that'll give you something to look forward to, it's quite exciting. So, um, and graduates, again, proud of you, make your dreams come true. We need you to change the world. We, this world's in need of changing, so you can change it. So on that note, have a wonderful summer and yeah, what day was their last day, Friday? Woo! I'm already like, Mom, what can I do today? I'm like, oh, no. No, 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 but you know. It's, it's okay. Today I was like, I'm going to work, here's your list of things to do. I doubt they'll be asking again, so. That's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Well, I guess that leaves me. Because we have, you know, room.
Well, everybody's leaving.
What I want to say is, I want to congratulate all the graduates. They were amazing. Our students are amazing.
It was, yes.
I'm, I'm so proud of them. You know, a lot of people want to count our numbers, want to say how low or how many or how less or how, how many can be there and not there. But I, I tell you, I've been to quite a few graduations this year. And believe me, the big ones, the five hundred-plus students, so interpersonal.
That's true.
Stand up, here's your class, sit down.
Yeah.
The way we did our graduation was, you know, we love you, you know? Our love always extends to you. So I want to say I'm proud of them, they did a great job. Uh, with that being said, I'm not going to teeter on anything else, ma'am. Tears not in my eyes yet.
Not yet, but maybe. I just want to say thank you to this board, um, this has made it through the first year. And, um, I want to thank you for, um, your support and us working together to make sure that we do what is best for our students, because that's the number one thing. Um, I learned quickly, get over yourself, because it, it really isn't about the adults. It is what we can do best for our students to make sure that they have success. And so I want to thank you guys for, um, being the supportive board that you are and, you know, showing me and us working together to do what is best for our students. And thank you to the community and our parents for trusting us with their, um, students to give them the education that they so deserve. So we have a ways to go, but we're working on it, um, every day to make sure that we provide good services because they are our customers.
Well, thank you. And I'm gonna piggyback on that. You know, our school is probably one of the smallest in the county. I'll call, I would say we're probably like ten percent. With that being said, to affect ten percent of the youth is to affect one hundred percent of the future.
Yes.
So, go my limits.
That's right.
Those are my comments. Move for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker, support by Ms. Escalante. Are there any questions, any additional discussions? One more time, one more time. Any counterfeiting? Give it to the hand.
You notice that I don't have one.
I opened myself for that.
You saw the, better, yeah, I was, I get better.
Cardiroll, please.
Mrs. Walter?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Voorhees? Dr. McFadden?
Yes.